It's 5:30. Let's call to order the special meeting and closed session meeting with the Belvidere City Council. City Clerk, may we call the roll, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Ken Mitzer. Councilmember Wilkinson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mark.
Here.
Mayor Lynch.
Here.
All present. If you're a member of the public and have joined today's meeting remotely from a PC, Mac, iPad, Android device, your audio will be on mute and your video will be off. Should you wish to speak on any item listed on the agenda, including public comment on closed session items, at that, at this time, we ask that you raise your hand. If you've called into the meeting, you can also press star nine, and we will unmute you when we call your name. Looking over at the attendees, I do see one raised hand, and for the record, Mayor, we did not receive any public comment for closed session today in the clerk inbox. So going over to the attendees, I'm going to go ahead and unmute Mr. Rothman.
All right, so we're now moving to the public comment on the closed session agenda item. Seeing no one here with any comments, we'll turn to Mr. Rothman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. As I informed the council, the entity that's listed as suing the city, the Californians for Home Ownership is a front organization for the California Association of Realtors. I want to be certain that no member of the council is a member of the California Association of Realtors or derives income from a real estate agency or developer agency that is a member of the California Association of Realtors. I do not know whether it would constitute, strictly speaking, a conflict of interest, but I do know that at least one member of the council was associated and may still be with an organization called Peak Development. Belvidere is not anxious to have Peak Development, so I want to raise that point. Again, I don't know whether the person is still a member of it. The other thing is, I'm sorry to see that this is even on the agenda. Has to be dealt with. If only you had gotten, if only the city had gotten a plan in, any plan. It could have been for birdhouses, whatever it could have been, you wouldn't be at this point being sued. In the other agenda item, we're raising the legal expenses, charges for about $350 an hour, and at least this part could have been avoided by just getting some kind of plan in on time. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Rothman. City Clerk, do we have any other raised hands wishing to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. There is no other raised hands.
All right, we will close the public comment, and we will return to closed session and resume at 6:30. All right, the council has returned from closed session where advice was received. The council authorized the preparation of a press release, and there is nothing else to report. With that, I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting in the city of Belvidere. City Clerk, can I ask you for a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Ken Mitzer.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wilkinson.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Mark.
Here.
Mayor Lynch.
Here.
For the record, all present. If you have joined, if you have joined today's meeting as a member of the public and are joining in remotely by PC, Mac, iPad, iPhone, or Android device, your audio will be on mute and your video will be turned off. Should you wish to speak on any item listed on the agenda, including, including open forum, and are using the Zoom meeting platform, please use the raise hand function, and at the appropriate time, we will unmute your audio and inform you that it is your opportunity to comment. If you have called into the meeting and wish to comment, please press star nine, and when unmuted, please identify yourself for the record and proceed with your comments. Please note, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Mayor, council members, written comment was submitted, and the distribution for public comments submitted for item 7A will be distributed during this meeting. A hard copy will be printed, provided to council, and will be posted on the website as well. That concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Our announcements, sorry.
Let's move to the next item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. That brings us to the next agenda item, which is reports and presentations. The first is city council reports. Do any of my colleagues have any reports they'd like to make? Councilmember Cooper.
First of all, I did attend a Parks and Open Space and Lanes committee meeting in January, and I know it's on our agenda tonight, so I'll let, when we get there, I think it'll be discussed thoroughly and, but I did attend it as one of my committee assignments. But very importantly, I am very proud to let everyone know in the community that one of our residents, Jill Nash, who's a resident of Leeward Road in here in Belvidere, was appointed by the President of the United States, President Biden, to the J. William Fulbright Foreign Scholarship Board. And there are 12, it's a 12-member board. Jill is now one of them. The scholarship board supervises the Fulbright program and certain programs authorized by the Fulbright-Hays Act, and for the purpose of selecting students, scholars, teachers, trainees, and other persons to participate in the educational exchange programs. I'm very proud to call Jill a good friend, my immediate neighbor, and also that this great appointment is, is something, a great honor, and we're all proud of her here in Belvidere. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any reports? I'd say that I do have one. It's not really a report so much as just a, an announcement of sorts relating to residential solar and the Climate Action Plan. Our Climate Action Plan, among other things, supports the conversion to sustainable green energy, including solar. Right now, there's a, there's a significant economic benefit to signing up for solar, residential solar, soon. While residential solar has many economic and environmental advantages, a particularly strong economic advantage changes in April of this year. In April, a new law will take effect, reducing compensation rates for new California solar customers. But if you submit a completed solar interconnection application by April 14 of this year, you can lock in the existing compensation rates for a 20-year term. I mentioned this only because after years of trying to pull the trigger on solar myself, I finally have made the leap, and I was informed of this economic impact, and I would encourage anyone who's thinking about solar to do it, period. Anyone who's thinking about solar might want to consider doing it soon because of the, the economic benefit for it, and that's all I have to say. All right, thank you. Next is the city manager's report. Mr. Zadnik.
Thank you, Mayor Lynch, and good evening, council members and members of the public tonight. I'll start off by reminding the community that a coyote information meeting has been scheduled for Thursday of this week at 6:00 PM. This will be a hybrid meeting of the city council. The public is welcome to attend over Zoom or in person here at City Hall. The meeting agenda and links have been posted on the city's website, and you can access them from the main page. While we don't have an exact estimate on the number of attendees for that meeting, this topic has been getting a lot of talk around not only Belvidere, but the entire peninsula. It's possible this meeting room could be full on Thursday. It's in anticipation of this, staff will be setting up an overflow room downstairs in the community center with live stream into the meeting. That said, we are looking forward to hearing from ecology experts and officials from the state who will be providing education on a variety of coyote management topics. They will also be discussing actions that the city and individual residents can take to deter these animals from entering their property. Once the presenters finish up, the meeting will then be opened up to council and to the public for Q and A. If you are available on Thursday evening, I do encourage you to attend. Switching to the topic of sustainability, we're all aware that the city recently adopted the new 2030 Climate Action Plan that outlines some ambitious goals for the next few years. One way we're meeting those goals is by expanding our electric vehicle charging stations at City Hall. This EV project is nearing completion, and I'm happy to report that Belvidere has been awarded two separate grants totaling $26,000 from the Transportation Authority of Marin and Marin Clean Energy. Those funds will be used to offset the purchase of EV charging pedestals and charging equipment that has recently been installed. This is just the start of what we anticipate will be several coming initiatives to meet our climate action goals over the next seven years. While on the topic of grant funds, I also want to point out that our finance director, Helga, has submitted an application for the Regional Early Action Planning Grant, or REIT, grant from HCD and the Association of Bay Area Governments. This grant is for $20,000 and is intended to offset some of the cost of adopting the six-cycle housing element. While it won't come close to fully funding the project, it is a welcome source of revenue for the city. So thank you, Helga, for putting that application together. I also want to bring to your attention that our Public Works Director and his engineering team have been diligently using the winter months to queue up the next cycle of road maintenance work for the spring. A contract to approve the 2023 road maintenance project is on the consent calendar this evening, and it includes repair of several rough spots of asphalt on Samerfell Avenue, cracked ceiling and slurry ceiling of those roads and surfaces, and then restriping and surfacing with fresh pavement markings afterwards. This work is anticipated to begin in March and April. Notices will be sent to the affected homeowners, and information will be posted on the city's website as the date approaches. And finally, DPW has been working these last several months with traffic engineers David Prezy and his team to develop alternatives for safety improvements on Lagoon Road near the bike path and on Samerfell Avenue where it intersects with Laurel Avenue by City Hall. We look forward to bringing recommended alternatives and preliminary cost estimates to the table for discussion on March 13 at the regular city council meeting, so in one month. That concludes my updates, and I'm happy to take questions if there are any.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions for Robert regarding that report?
I just have one comment. Since you mentioned the hard work of the Public Works Department, I just want to take this moment to thank our Public Works Department for keeping the roads clear and safe during the storm, recent storms. Sometimes no news is good news, and the fact that we had no catastrophic news is tremendous news, and I think it's really important to recognize our Public Works Department for its hard work during this really difficult winter. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to echo that comment. I was stunned during the volume of rain that was coming down for many weeks in a row, how many drains I noticed throughout the city, all of which were clear continuously in day and night, so quite remarkable. Thank you. Any other questions about the city manager's report? All right, then we'll move on to Chief Wu's Belvidere Police Department quarterly report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zadnik. If I can trouble you to queue up the
bear with me. Chief Wu, perhaps you could speak a little more closely to your microphone.
Sure, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Lynch, council members. Tonight, I am pleased to present the police department's fourth quarter report for 2022. I always take pride in stating that the hallmark of the police department is the unparalleled personalized service that allows our residents to enjoy the very unique quality of life. With that said, regarding our RIPA data for the quarter, 12 individuals were stopped based on nine officer-initiated actions, along with three separate calls for services. Nine stops were for traffic violations, two were for vehicle collisions, and one was for mental health. In all, nine warnings were given, two assists to citizens were provided, and one was transported for mental health. The perceived racial compositions of those stops consist of 10 Conchadians and two Hispanics. During, during this quarter, the police department handled 633 incidents, which included three Part I offenses and five Part II offenses. The remaining 625 incidents were classified as all other incidents. The majority of calls continues to be calls for service from our community. For the fourth quarter, the department conducted nine traffic stops, made one arrest, which was referred for prosecution, received numerous appreciations from our residents, and received one citizen's complaint. We also assisted Taron Petey on three occasions. As part of our ongoing professional development, police department personnel attended several hours of online and in-person training that were either mandated or for knowledge and skill enhancements. 29 Lexible policies were updated in accordance with amended laws. They were detailed in January's staff report and subsequently ratified by council. Lastly, Belvidere Police Department continues to be active in community events, which we take great pride and joy in being part of. With that, staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Chief Wu. Do we have any questions about the police report? I'm not seeing any. So we can close the reports. Thank you, Chief Wu. We can close the reports and move on to the consent calendar.
I do see a raised hand, Mayor, for this item. Would you want to take public comment?
Sure, yes, thank you.
Let me go over and unmute Mr. Rothman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to comment on Mr. Zadnik's report. He explained that there would be time for questions and answers. Since this is, this is going to be a city council meeting, the coyote meeting, it's listed on the agenda as a council meeting, therefore, the Brown Act, you may very well be aware of this, requires that there not just be questions and answers, but there can also be statements by members of the public. And from what I've gathered from reading Belvidere Neighbor, there's a whole lot of people who have a whole lot of opinions that are not questions and answers. So this is just a reminder that it is a Brown Act meeting, and that the public shouldn't think that they'll only be able to ask questions in order to get answers. They can also give their opinion, their perspectives, whatever. I just wanted that that should be clarified. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Mayor, I see no raised hands.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the next agenda item, which is the consent calendar. First, let me ask if we have any questions or comments from council about the consent calendar.
Could I pull 5B, please?
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I guess I have one question about 5E. You mentioned that the second part, part of the proposal was, was, was not within the budget, so you pulled it out. Could you just discuss that briefly?
Yeah, Tony is here if it gets too complicated, but my understanding of it is that there was a segment of roadway from Pine Avenue where it intersects at Belvidere Avenue, and then down closer towards, I believe it was Blanding, that was scheduled for a complete rehab, which means that we would grind out that entire section of roadway and replace it with new. From my understanding, the budget numbers were, all of them were, were higher than what we had initially forecasted for this, which means we're going to look for ways to value engineer that, potentially come back with a new project sooner than later, and also maybe a couple funds with this next upcoming fiscal year to make that happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council about the consent calendar items? Seeing none. Can I ask the clerk to read the notice regarding public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, if you wish to speak on any item on the consent calendar, we ask that you please select the raise hand icon to speak, and if you've called into the meeting, we ask that you please press star nine. Looking over at the attendee side, we have nine attendees. I do not see any raised hands, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And there's no one in chambers tonight wishing to speak on this item, so we will close public comment. And I will invite a motion to approve the consent calendar in its entirety, except for item 5B.
I can make that motion to approve the consent calendar for all items except for 5B.
Thank you, Commissioner Mark, for moving. Commissioner Wilkinson, for a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Ken Mitzer.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkinson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mark.
Yes.
Mayor Lynch.
Yes.
The eyes have it, and the motion is adopted. 5O.
Thank you. Let's move to the public hearings. The first item of business would be the item previously that
5B.
Previously identified as 5B in the consent calendar, which will now be part of our public hearing. May I ask for a presentation from staff?
Mayor, if, if I may, I might be able to shortcut this by just mentioning my concerns.
Thank you.
But it's up to you.
Why don't, why don't we do that, then? Why don't, why don't you, we've all read the staff report and the supporting materials. Commissioner, Ken Mitzer, why don't you go ahead, or Councilmember Ken Mitzer, explain?
Yeah, thank you. This is a fairly unusual request for a revocable license, partly procedurally, so part of my concern may just need some clarification. I did check with the, the Planning Commission record, and as I understand it, this request for revocable license came up after the approval. So my first question, and I'll, I'll have a couple. My first question is whether the elements that are the subject of the revocable license did ever come before the Planning Commission for approval of the design review. So that would be number one. Our records, as far as I could see, and the, the reduced plans are a little bit hard to read, but we don't have an elevation of the gate. My concerns really are focused on, on a portion of the improvements in the revocable license that would prevent public access to the revocable license area, which would be inconsistent with the terms of the license. So my question number two is, does the gate close? We have on numerous other occasions not, and there is an elevation of the gate, but I'd like to see the, the whole side, if possible, to, to see it in context. So I'm really trying to get a feel for what part of the public land the public would be prevented from accessing. This property does enjoy the benefits of a revocable license on the bill view side of the property as opposed to the Alcatraz side of the property. The plans are a bit hard to read because they're so reduced, and I'm not absolutely sure that the gate is in the public right of way, or one of the plans makes it look like it's actually on the property line, but I'd like clarification of that. Our policy is that fences and gates are generally disapproved in the, the public area. And then my third concern is that that's one of the narrowest streets in all of Belvidere, and I would like to have a condition of approval that the fire marshal review this for public safety before the license issues. And I may have overlooked it, but I don't think that's in the, the license documents that are part of our packet. So with those three questions, I may be able to approve it, but I certainly needed some clarification because it appears to be outside of our normal policies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ken Mitzer. I may be able to answer some of these questions, and we also, I believe, have the applicant or the applicant's architect, Albert Dilemma, here tonight. He has been joined as a panelist, and Albert, if you're able to or interested in commenting, you can do that as well. Looking at the plan set I, in the staff report, I, I do see that excuse me, one second. Let's load. I do see, while this is loading, to get to your second question, Councilmember Ken Mitzer, regarding the gate, I do see an elevation photo in L-5 on the set of plans. It's not shown specifically with an overlay with regard to the public right of way, but it does give you an idea of the sense of how that's going to, it's going to function and look.
Does that gate lock?
That's a good question. Albert, can you answer that question for us?
It, it doesn't have to lock. There's no intention to lock it. It's immediately next to the little alleyway that's open between the buildings, and, you know, one could easily walk around that gate at any time. And it's, doesn't encroach any further into the street than the existing mailbox and, and walls and such that are there already from, there, there is an old existing revocable license along Alcatraz Ave, and, and the gate is not any, for, you know, we're not changing the edge of pavement.
Thank you, Albert. And then Nancy, to your earlier question, what I am seeing regarding design review is a June 21, 2022, application to the Planning Commission, which they approved for demolition, design review variance, and the exception to the total floor area.
And so that, I don't believe was in, was that in our packet? I, I don't remember seeing that, so that would clarify that point. So we have this L5. So it is, it shows a gate, but there's not an elevation that shows it attached to anything. And so when I did the site visit, it was a little unclear to me. There seems to be a curb and a planter box that was raised above grade. I'm not sure that really what the previous revocable license is included, but it's really unclear.
but it's really unclear whether it allowed raised planter boxes. My concern, and it could be alleviated by our conversation this evening, I'm not saying how I vote until I heard what everybody has to say, but my concern was that at, that the revocable license area, in other words, city property that is, that is being landscaped by, used by the property owner is reducing the width of this very, very narrow street. I would, and I'm assuming, but I don't know, that the elevation of that gate attaches to the raised planter boxes. It's a little bit unclear, and maybe the architect can can explain it. I think my concerns, I'd like to hear what my fellow council members say, particularly, well, all, everybody. A number of us have been on the Planning Commission before. But we have denied gates in the public right of way in numerous occasions. And I think it is very important that all the residents be treated fairly. I'm thinking of three in particular on Beach Road. And I'm sorry, yes, three on Beach Road and elsewhere on the island. So if there's a particular benefit to the property owner from that, that might be something we would want to hear. What I couldn't tell from the plans, the reduced plans, is whether it's de minimis, with how far into the public space that is. And this might be something that the fire marshal could approve later by simply being given the, or disapprove, being given the opportunity to determine that first responders could still protect the the other homeowners on Alcatraz Avenue. So those are my concerns, and I'd like to hear what anybody else has to say and and certainly what staff has to say.
Do we have, well, can those questions be answered right now?
I can answer some of them. The, the, there, there's an existing revocable license along Alcatraz that shows the curb and we're not going anywhere and and little planting area behind the curb as well. We're not proposing to encroach into the street at all, more than what's there. And that's to, you know, there's the the benefit to the owner is they get a lot of people coming on to their property now because they can't differentiate between Holly Lane and the private walkway that leads to the residence. And this would provide them the, I want to, don't want to, protection is probably not the correct word, but would, you know, direct the the public to Holly Lane, so they're not accidentally coming down their front walk. And and we did ask planning in the process, do we need to apply for a revocable license for this new work? And they said, no, there's no, you know, you already have a revocable license. You're not encroaching any further. And what ultimately drove the application for the revocable license was the the need for the anchors below the roadway. And and that's the, you know, to make sure that the structure is secure and the and the, and the road is stable.
With respect to L two point oh.
The other thing I was gonna say is fire. Sorry, fire does a review of all of this in the, in the process. And we, you know, we try to address any any comments they have. We take it very seriously. That's it.
I'm looking at L two point oh. Just wonder whether it would be possible to put that gate on your own property line. As I said, it looks like it's not that far off. And, and, oh, sorry.
It's, it's behind the curb, but it's right on the property line.
If your, if your gate's on the property line, we would not be treating you any differently than other residents. But if your, your gate is in the public right of way, preventing the public from using the public right of way, that would be different than how we have treated other people in Belvedere. So I, for one, would like to be consistent. It looks like it wouldn't be a big change for you, but it would, it would conform to our policies.
I, I don't see why we can't move it, the gate, so that it's behind the the property line. It would be nice if the posts, the that are encasing the the mailbox could encroach. It wouldn't encroach as much as it does now. But I'm just, I want to make sure we have kind of sufficient room to maneuver around the uphill side of the house like they do now.
So is that yes?
It's kind of halfway there. You know, because this was a landscape plan on the architect, talking about the landscape plan and I, you know, I think, you know, the owners would really like it to stay there. This was brought in front of the Planning Commission at least three times for, to get this plan approved. And 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 we're, like I said, everything is behind where the encroachment occurs now. And so it's, it's loosening things up there. And we appreciate that the the street is tight there. And we're trying to to open it up and allow everybody, you know, allow the public to do their thing and the owner to get past and around the front of their house as required to maintain it. It'd be nice to, you know, maintain at least three feet between the front of the house and and this gate for, for maintenance purposes. And I think, you know, those posts have to be a certain size to encase the mailbox. And 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 if it all goes behind the property line, we won't be able to really get around to the front of the house.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time?
Yeah, I would if I could. Maybe I can add some context here if I, if I'm able. I'm familiar with this project. I think I was part of this review. Maybe one of the early reviews of it. And I do believe in, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, that most of the, if not all of the improvements that we're looking at tonight in the revocable area do exist already, have been there. And the design review of the project itself included modest work on the house itself, but a significant amount of work. I'm looking at page forty of the plan, the the blow up of the, of the forty of the overall document. Sheet one, site plan, the blow up of the revocable license area itself. Majority of the work on the project itself that was reviewed by the Planning Commission had to do with the garage and the improvements in that area down the slope towards the street below. And the applicant had moved a considerable amount of improvements away from the street and away from the existing revocable license. And I do believe that part of the effort to do so was to maintain the pedestrian path from that garage area to the front door. And as that, as that potential new gate, which is, would be installed on top of the existing curb, is moved to the right in this plan or down slope, it starts to jeopardize the width of that walkway there. So I think that's what the architect is describing. So given that this has existed for twenty some years, if not longer, and that that door doesn't go to anywhere other than the property line, and if the architect is able to move it as close to that property line as possible, I would probably be okay with this, because I do see that majority of this plan and majority of this improvements was an attempt to improve the garage structure and moving it away from that. So net on, 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 on balance, the majority of this plan did move improvements away from that revocable license area. Am I correct about that? I believe that was, that would happen.
Yeah, we, we were trying to provide the safety and widen the road as much as we could all along the driveway. And and then also, there's a kind of little chain with posts and stuff along that curb. And that will be removed and it'll be replaced with a planting area. So the net effect is that the road will appear and feel and wider, even though the actual width of the pavement will not be any wider, but because the, the, the landscaping, hard elements and stuff will be further back. It will, the, the goal is to provide a, you know, a nicer experience to promote the public. And yet still allow the resident to get around the front of the house on their, on their land.
But that's actually very helpful. Are, did I hear you say that those bollards and the chain that is currently in the revocable license are are to be removed? It shows that on the plans and and that's just a walkway now?
Well, it's just a detail that's there. We didn't call out the chain and 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 posts and stuff, but it will be that the, the net effect is that those little kind of horse heads with the chain in between will be gone. And and that will become planting. And then the garden walls will go up behind that. Whether, and it'll crisscross the the property line as illustrated on, you know, sheet L two. And so there'll be all, you know, all those little areas marked P A are are planting areas. And then and then when you get to the gate, it's, the gate is still, you know, at least I'd say, you know, just judging, you know, about, you know, at least a foot or two feet behind the the, the, the curb. So that it's, you know, the, the net result is that it'll, it should feel more open.
My point, thank you for that. On that same page, attachment D, page forty seven, that shows the existing garage, or when we had reviewed it at the Planning Commission, which was perpendicular to the property line and up, up through and into the revocable area. It's now proposed to be pushed further downhill and on an angle, widening both, both that perspective and also the the pedestrian views and openness there. That was really the trade off that I was discussing that we reviewed and didn't mind as a planning commission, obviously, this, this, this body can review it, the walkway that was existing up there.
Yeah, the, the existing curb along the garage and the face of the garage encroach into the street as well as over the roadway, you know, by about a foot or so. And we'll be pulling it about four or five feet back away from the edge of pavement and onto the property. And and widening the the parking on the downhill side of the garage so that, you know, doors won't be swinging out into the oncoming traffic and people aren't, you know, well, it won't be tight for cars to get by people when they're walking across the, the front of the yard where the existing garage and parking area is now. And then when it gets to where the curb is, the edge of pavement will, will remain the same and the curb location will remain the same, but the little chains and such will, will be gone.
Thank you. Do we have other questions of staff at this time?
Also, you know, just, I was gonna say, we're also providing an open railing on the on the downhill side of the, of the open parking area so that, to accommodate views of the of the bay and all of that. So it's, we're really trying to improve the experience for, for everybody and net improvement.
Thank you. Let me open it up for public comment. I don't see anyone in chambers who wishes to speak. Do we have anyone online?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking over at the attendees with eight attendees, I see no raised hands.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Kinnitser, should I begin with you and take your temperature and where you are?
I'd like to hear what my fellow council members say. Particularly those who've had experience denying other gates.
Very well, thank you. Councilmember Cooper, can I start with you?
I've had no experience in this. So I don't have any comments, sorry.
All right, Councilmember Wilkinson.
I think my inclination would be to approve this revocable license.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mark?
Yes, I would concur with that. I can see approving this as well. I think that the improvements are there and the overall effect to the revocable license has been very positive for the community.
Thank you. And I'll just weigh in as well. I have reviewed this and I'm familiar with the property. And it's, it's my view that is there, there were existing improvements in the revocable license. And that what is proposed actually retreats a little bit from that. And where the gate appears to be, the posts appear to be essentially on top of the property line, abutting it, but in front of it in in the revocable license, that does feel to me like a de minimis encroachment and one that in the entirety of the project actually retreats from the usage of the public right of way. So I would be inclined to support it as well. But I'd like to hear from a council member, Kinnitser.
Hi, no, and I really appreciate the discussion and the and the clarifications of Councilmember Mark to give context to what was happening before. I think from this conversation, what has occurred to me is that because it's next to a public lane that is not being affected by this gate and that it is just a few inches from the property land, which is actually very hard to tell from the from the documents we have. I think that I would be willing to make an exception to our general rule and approve this tonight. I think it's very important that, particularly when things like this come up on the consent calendar, that we each take a really close look at it and do a site visit. It is the policy to of, that we have discussed and reiterated before that fences and gates that really remove property from the joint benefit to the public are just favored. But having, having said that and not setting a precedent, I think the exception in this case But having, having said that and not setting a precedent, I think the exception in this case, from what I've heard tonight, is that it is very small and it is next to a public lane. So the public will not be deprived of that. I, I do think that the fire marshal should have an opportunity to weigh in on this. It occurs to me that even though it's not in the revocable license itself, perhaps staff could clarify whether the original planning approval may have required, as is usual in the boilerplate, that the fire marshal approve the project before construction begins. Was that done in this case? Do we know?
My understanding is that the fire marshal is looped into these applications prior to them being forwarded to the planning commission. So Mike would have had an opportunity to look at this and provide his comments prior to the planning commission review. That said, I, I think it would be worth considering having Mike take another look at it. If that's desire of city council.
With that caveat, I could approve them.
All right, I'll entertain a motion then to approve item five B regarding the revocable license conditioned upon confirmation that the fire marshal has signed off on this. Is there such a motion?
I so moved.
Thank you.
Second, thank you, Mark.
Can we call the roll, please?
Member Cooper. Council member Kenner.
Yes.
Council member Wilkinson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mark.
Yes.
Mayor Lynn.
Yes.
The eyes have it and the motion is adopted five oh.
Thank you. We move now to item six A. City council consideration of an appeal of a construction timeline penalties. I understand we have a staff report from Mr. Vance on.
Okay, just, all right, fantastic. All right. Good evening, Mayor Lynch, fellow council members. It's nice to be back in person finally. Before you tonight is an appeal of a construction timeline penalty assessed to the landscape improvement project at one twenty six Majona Avenue. This project provided an original valuation of $400,000, at which point a twelve month C T L timeline was assessed to the project. The project was 220 days over the C T L deadline and was assessed a total penalty of $214,800. At the C T L penalty appeals meeting, the appellant provided four arguments for consideration of the appeal. These included delays of construction due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, undervaluation of the proposed project originally, resulting in a twelve month C T L timeline in lieu of an eighteen month C T L timeline, lack of response by the local, local utility provider to install a gas meter, and the lack of knowledge of the requirement to obtain Marin County Sanitary District Five project approval prior to the finalization of the building permit. As detailed in the staff report, the C T L extension committee could not make the findings to provide relief of the penalties for the underestimation of the original project valuation, the lack of response by the utility company, nor the claim of the lack of knowledge of the Marin County Sanitary District Five approval requirement. However, the committee did find it reasonable that the COVID nineteen pandemic had a negative impact on the overall project, causing it to last longer than originally anticipated. Additionally, the committee did agree that the sewer work only took about two weeks to complete. Should this work have been allowed to be conducted immediately, the project would have been completed days after the C T L deadline and penalized a minimal amount. While the project may have gone months long on paper, the impact of construction on the surrounding neighborhood was concentrated to only a few days once the sewer work was allowed to commence. Staff finds it reasonable that city council can make the findings to relieve part of these fines. However, is up to the city council as to how much relief will be provided. Staff, staff is open for any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any questions of staff at this time?
I, I do. I always seem to. Thank you, Brian. Can you, I see in your note, November eighteenth, twenty twenty two outlining the the, the, the C T L expiration. You talked about the scope of the work, construct new deck, site wall, spa associated and landscape improvements. Can you describe the project itself? The, the scope of it, perhaps the, the dollar outlay? And, and in particular, what is the threshold that triggers sanitary district number five improvements?
Of course, we don't have the overall, we haven't done the revaluation process. We were, we were handling this penalty appeal first. So we don't have that final cost. However, in talking with the contractor, it was over a half million dollars, which would have provided at the eighteen month timeline. In regards to the scope of work, it is, it was a large landscape improvement with retaining walls, railings, the addition of spa decking, things like that. And I'm sorry, I forgot your, your, your third request.
I guess my point is, is they don't seem to be any significant adding of interior space, water fixtures, facilities. And it's triggering a sanitary district five improvement. I'm trying to understand what triggered that requirement.
No problem, sorry about that. The city of Belvidere is not a full serve city, meaning we utilize outside districts as part of our services. Tiburon Fire Protection District, Marin Municipal Water District, and Marin County Sanitary District Five are the three main ones. These districts have their own codes, their own statutes and their own ordinances. Per Marin County Sanitary District Five, anytime a building permit is issued where the valuation is $50,000 or greater, the sanitary district will come in or have the property owner scope or videotape their sewer lateral to make sure it is in compliance with current standards. If it is not, the sanitary district will have them replace that lateral. That work is required to be done prior to the finalization of the building permit.
And just a quick follow up. And Belvidere has no saying that whatsoever irrespective of, like I said, no change to interior space, no water fixtures improvements whatsoever.
No, sir, we do not.
And that's, and that's the district's determination of $50,000?
Yes, sir, that is their ordinance.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
I have a couple of questions, Brian, if I may. One is in your report just now, you said the work on the sewer line took just a couple of weeks. Is that right?
From our records and, and speaking with the, the appellate team, yes, that is correct.
Okay, because I, I got the impression that the work was done in September and it took a couple of days. I was looking at the PowerPoint presentation. And that was the way I read the staff report as well, is that the work done in, in September, according to the property owner, was the work was done on September thirteen and fourteen.
So we have, per our records, we have an encroachment permit pulled for sewer work for an entire week in September. And we have an additional encroachment permit, I believe, for two days the following week. It wasn't completed originally or immediately following the completion of the project due to the location of the sewer lateral, which one runs through a neighboring property. Now, the subject property one twenty six Majona does have a legal easement, a utility easement for that lateral. However, they could not coordinate with the neighbor until late September and get that work completed. Once the neighbor allowed one twenty six Majona plumbers to get onto that property and replace the sewer lateral, the work was, was completed in, in six to ten days.
Okay. One other question, I don't know if you know this or if this is for the applicant or the homeowner rather. If the work was finished in mid September, the first city inspection that failed was October twelve. And then San Five finally gave it sign off on October fourteen. Do you know what caused the delay between the, the point in time in September when the work was completed and the sign off from San Five was obtained?
No, I do not.
All right, thank you.
We do have the appellate team here that is probably.
Yeah.
Any other questions of staff at this time? All right, why don't we open it up for public comment? We'll hear from the property owner and team.
Hi, this is Julie Wayne Wright. I'm the property owner. But I'm going to turn it over to the contractors and the contractors at legal counsel. I can say that the work, I, I will say, but like just to give them credit, the work before the sewer work was all completed within the extension time. The only thing outstanding was the sewer work. And Brian is being very diplomatic, the owners, the, even though I did have a legal easement for the property below, they, it was a very difficult experience and there were a lot of threats against a, but people trying to do the sewer work within a timely manner. And it was completed under sort of an extreme threat of a lawsuit. So we did every, I'm just saying, we did everything we could to try to bring it in within a few days. But I will turn it over to their counsel because she has exact dates.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see if this works. Let's see, how do we do this? Star nine. Hello?
We can both, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Oh, good. Hi. I, I just want to say that I appreciate the work that Mr. Seun and the committee did and how much time they spent listening to what happened in this project. Ms. Wayne Wright has told you now what happened, which is that the downhill neighbor made it very difficult to complete the sewer work. The short story is that my client did not appreciate that a sewer lateral would have to be inspected and replaced as part of this project. That work was never part of its contract. When my client found out, it was at the point that the project had been conditionally approved by the city of Belvidere. And then Oxbow went into, it, it did everything it could to get the sewer lateral inspected and replaced as quickly as possible. I have submitted a declaration from the plumber who did the work. The actual days that it took were February twenty eighth and September thirteenth and September fourteenth of twenty twenty two. Sandy Five came out on the fifteenth and approved it. You have a copy of the approval. It shows that it was approved on the fifteenth and then it had to be signed off by two people in Sandy Five. One on September twenty first and one on September twenty seventh. But the bottom line is you have those three days that I described, and then you have another day to install an asphalt patch in Bella Vista. So we have four days. So I would appreciate it on behalf of the contractor and the owner. If you would consider adopting the recommendations of the committee, but reducing the penalty to four days. I think everyone appreciates the value of this ordinance, but the intent is to protect the neighborhood from construction and trucks and traffic. And we had four days when that was possibly an issue after the time that everything else was done within the time allowed under the C T L. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask just for clarification? You mentioned a declaration from a plumber.
Yes.
And I don't believe I've seen that. I don't know if my fellow council members have seen that.
It was submitted, I submitted it to Mr. Seun and he submitted it to the clerk. So I, I understand it was to be given to you.
Can I ask you about the, the timeline? I'm looking now at the PowerPoint that was presented, I think, as part of the
Sure.
the meeting, the initial sort of appeal process. It refers to September fifteen sign off by sanitary five. Is that right?
Yes.
But i- i- isn't it right that the, the city inspection that, that came out on the twelfth failed because the San Five sign off was incomplete in some way?
What, what I understand is that Sandy Five didn't actually sign off on the permit card. That, that's what I, I have surmised. There's a place on the, on the permit card itself for Sandy Five to sign. And I suspect they didn't know they had to sign that.
And what form of approval did, did the homeowner get from San Five on September fifteen?
They got a writing that is attached to the declaration of go for it, the, the plumber. And it, I will read it to you. Let me just pull it out. Of course, I, I pulled, I had it all ready. So give me just a second and I will pull it out.
Barbara, if you don't mind, it's a, it's a stated letter of defiance from a representative at sanitary district five.
Great. Thank you.
And it's dated September fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Right, thank you. Are there other questions of the homeowner and team from council members? I don't see any. Is there anything else, Ms. Jewel, you'd like to add at this time?
Not that I can think of. I appreciate your time. I am sorry that this whole situation happened for everyone. I, I hope you will appreciate the sincerity of Oxbow and the homeowner that they have tried to do right. And that you will act accordingly.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Why don't we open up for public comment? Is there anyone in chambers who'd like to address this agenda item? Not seeing anyone. City clerk, do we have any?
Thank you, Mayor.
One online?
Looking over at the attendees, I see eight attendees with one raised hand. I'm going to go over and then Mr. Rothman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Having lived in Belvidere for fifty years, I've observed that these fines, it's kind of a love hate relationship with residents. And I, there are many instances I wouldn't, don't have time to get into them where it's as if you want to, the council sometimes seems to want to punish people when they shouldn't be punished. Discussing this particular issue, so far as I could tell, if they had made it the, if they had said that it was more, that they could have gotten eighteen months simply by stating that it was going to be a bigger project. If you fine people for making a mistake like that, that they didn't know how much it was going to cost, then you encourage everybody to apply for eighteen months. Say the project going to cost a million dollars and then you have to give them the money back when it doesn't cost a million dollars. So it doesn't accomplish anything. In addition, the actual inconvenience to the neighbors seems to be nothing so far as I could tell. And if they had simply said, oh, we think this is going to be a million dollars, they wouldn't even be standing, they wouldn't even be here. The issue never would have been raised. And you encourage, I think, violation of the intent by punishing people when they shouldn't be punished. Finally, I could not imagine, and I think Peter Mark didn't say so, but I, he was sort of saying, you mean if you just spend $50,000 on, on some sort of thing like, say, doing some siding and something like that, that automatically you have the sewer lateral has to be examined? Well, that doesn't make the least bit of sense. There was no plumbing, et cetera. So it, it, so the fact that the Sandy Five says you have to do it, well, that's just fine, but you don't have to fine people for not, for, for having made a mistake in that respect. Because it shouldn't even be a rule that exists anywhere, that exists anyway. So I don't think it's a question of reducing the, I think you shouldn't find them anything whatsoever. It, it, it would just be, it's, it's unnecessary punishment and it shouldn't be done. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Rothman. Do we have anyone else wishing to address this agenda item from the public?
Thank you, Mayor. I see no other raised hands.
All right, excellent. We'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Council member Cooper, may I start with you?
I don't have a problem with.
I don't have a problem with the reduction in the fees. I think the only problem I had is that there was an awful lot of discussion on the part of the homeowner about lack of knowledge about the sewer and the company that was hired, who also didn't know anything about the sewer laterals. And I, I'm pretty sure that Mr. Von San mentioned that the actual building permit does have a check mark next to sewer district needing to be done. And that is on the original dated the same day, September 29th, 2020. So I guess I, I just am confused why that, unless Oxbow has never done any work in Belvedere, that 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 was missed since it's on the building permit itself. So I do understand the COVID, I understand the other issues, but I, maybe we should require the homeowner to sign our planning permits so that they're aware of whatever it is that's required.
Thank you. Council member. You, Wilkinson.
So obviously, I mean, we've had quite a few C T L fine appeals coming for us recently. And I think this is the first one to my mind where there's a really strong case to waive the fees almost in their entirety. I mean, I think the purpose of the C T L fine structure as it exists now, and which I hope we will be changing, is to really incentivize people to finish their projects as soon as possible and impose this little burden on the community as possible. And I would think it would be, I cannot believe that a applicant with a half a million dollar project would willfully choose to ignore a requirement and accrue fines of over $200,000. That would be completely insane. And so I, I don't think there was any malintent here. I don't think there was any impact on the local community. And so beyond the small fine that's being recommended by staff, I think there's very strong grounds to waive the rest of those, of those fines. But I would say at the same time that I know the Construction Impact Committee was recommending changes to these fine structures. And I think that's something we should certainly be looking at going forward.
Thank you. Council member Kevin's room?
I agree with the comments of council member Wilkinson. I've studied the file and gone by the property. I can actually see in these circumstances where someone would be confused or even an experienced contractor would be confused by the requirements of San Five. And most importantly here, the purpose of the C T L is to minimize the impact of construction projects on the surrounding neighborhood. And my view of the facts that have been presented tonight really indicate that that was not the case. So I think this is the fairly unusual situation where we should really not impose the fine as it is written. And I would agree with the amount stated and the conclusion of the staff report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mark.
Thank you. I agree with what fellow council members have said. I do think that our construction time limit process is meant to be as absolute and as, as directive as possible. And try, we try to limit as much subjectivity as we possibly can, but subjectivity does certainly exist. And I would agree that this, this circumstance is such that there's a big difference between a sewer lateral eight feet to a main on West Shore or some other property versus through a neighbor's property around a corner, 200 feet up, up, up a street behind your house. That, that is a burden that, coupled with the antagonistic relationship that seemed to come about through this, which made it difficult to schedule it in a timely fashion. It certainly seems to fit the definition of beyond the applicant's control, which I can certainly agree with. I, and Brian, I'd love to talk about this at some other time, the requirements with Senator number five. I mean, the idea that, I get it when you're, when you're adding fixtures and services within the house. But if you're doing something, as other people mentioned, that don't relate to the water service, don't relate to sewer service, and you're, you're, you're asked to do an improvement of a project, which can cost a considerable amount of money, which I would imagine this did. There has to be an exemption process, or I would like to petition for one in, in some cases. I would agree that the fine should certainly be drastically reduced. And I would see it between the four to 10 days that was being proposed. I would honestly err more on the fore side, but I can agree with what the council is seeing with the 10 days.
Thank you. Thank you. I studied this file at great length. It's very difficult to review these construction time limit appeals just because of their nature. And Mr. Rothman, you know, referred to it in his public comment. They're, they're difficult to deal with. And the way we deal with them, the way we make peace with it is we, we have to apply the objectivity that Vice Mayor Mark referred to. And we have to be certain and careful and diligent that we're rooting our decisions in making decisions that are both principled and consistent. They're principled in the sense they're rooted in the law and they're rooted in the purpose of the law. And they're consistent in the sense that we apply them as evenly and consistently across all applicants and dependents as we can. And I think that's really important to say, because I share the comments of my fellow council members, that this is one of the rare instances where I think a drastic reduction in the calculated fine would be appropriate. I, I do want to say that concerns around a lack of awareness of what was required for the application, that's very difficult for us to make exceptions for, because everyone has the same sit down with the building department. Everyone is told what's required and it's written down and so forth. You know, COVID hit everybody in a lot of ways. There was an extension in the timeline that contemplated that. This applicant came back for an extension to February 11. So I think a lot of accommodations were made. I think that was handled appropriately, both by the homeowner and by our staff. So I want to commend both sides for being diligent on this. But this circumstance with the Donnybrook with the neighbor about getting access to an existing easement to do a sewer lateral, to me, just seems completely out of the hands of the homeowner and not something that can, can, can be a basis for imposing a fine. And so with that, having studied the timeline, let me just propose, the timeline was extended, the deadline was extended to February 8, when the homeowners learned of the difficulty with the sewer lateral or the need for that, they applied to San Five. As I understand the staff report on February 11, there's no explanation for that three day delay. But that is the way the staff report reads. And then if I understand, the homeowner, there was three days work after the deadline. And that was the 28th of February and then two days in September. And then there was the sign off situation where they get a signed letter of compliance from San Five, but they don't get the job card signed. And I think that that is a circumstance that, given the fact that there is no work other than those three days being done, no burden on the city, no burden on the neighbors, it wouldn't advance the purposes of the construction time limit ordinance if we were to impose the calculated fine. I would, I would propose that we consider a fine equivalent of six days. That would be the three days from February 8 to the 11th, when they first applied for San Five approval, and then the three days of work that occurred after that. And so I would entertain a motion, a six day fine. I'm sorry, and let me, let me just add, I would propose also that we revise the resolution. The bottom of the first page of the resolution has, has an A and a B on it as the basis for relief from the fine. I would scratch those out and replace them with A, reference to the neighbor dispute over access to the site for the sewer line replacement caused almost the entirety of this delay. And B, no work occurred on the site after the February 8/22 deadline, except for work on February 28 and on September 13 and 14, 2022.
I would propose a resolution of the city council. City of Belvedere affirming a construction time limit, modifying the construction time limit, subcommittee penalty recommendation for 126 Madonna Avenue, subject to the edits Mayor Lynch just described. And in the fourth paragraph, the number should be changed to $3,600.
Second.
Thank you. Can we call the roll, please?
Council member Cooper? Council member Kimmelsor?
Yes.
Council member Wilkinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mark?
Yes.
Mayor Lynch?
Yes.
The I's have it in the motion is adopted, 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Of course. Let's move to agenda item 6B, adopting ordinance number 2023-01, repealing contents of certain chapters of the construction code. I understand we have a report from Mr. Van San.
Ryan, I can go ahead and take this one. That'd be helpful. Sure. Mayor Lynch, this is the second reading and adoption of the city's building code updates to comply with the state law. The first reading and scheduling of a public hearing occurred on January 9th. Again, this is just a procedural item to get this item passed. Happy to take questions if there are any.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment. I don't see anyone here in chambers looking to address this item. Is there anyone online?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking over at the attendees with nine attendees and no raised hands.
Thank you. We'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for any discussion or motion. I'm not seeing or hearing any discussion.
I'm prepared to move the adopt.
Very well. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Can we call the roll, please?
Council member Cooper? Council member Kimmelsor?
Yes.
Council member Wilkinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mark?
Yes.
Mayor Lynch?
Yes.
The I's have it in the motion is adopted, 5-0.
Thank you. Let's move to item 6C of the agenda. Introduction, first reading of the ordinance number 2023-02, amending the Belvedere Municipal Code regarding accessory dwelling units. We have a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Lynch. Sammy's going to be presenting this item.
If you don't mind, my, my notes are going to be there. Or I could do it without the presentation and just speak.
Do, do whatever feels comfortable for you. Thank you. Recognizing that we've all read the report, and so you might want to, feel free to hit the highlights or whatever you think makes the most sense.
Well, thank you, Mayor Lynch and members of city council for your consideration this evening. There is an amendment to the city's A D U ordinance to conform with Assembly Bill 2221 and S B 897, which became effective beginning of this year. An A D U is an in-law unit, can be attached or detached from the main residence, has exterior access, kitchen, bathroom. A junior A D U is smaller, 500 square feet and located within a primary residence. There's been multiple bills passed to, to, to change, to, to make A D Us more accepted in California. And this year, we had in January 1st, a new assembly bill, A B 2221, and Senate Bill 89, 897. A B 2221 requires that all cities change their A D U height limits to at least 16 feet. It requires cities document all reasons that application is rejected, addresses front setbacks. And it also allows developers to propose new A D Us and new multifamily housing concurrently. S B 897 addresses unpermitted work, A D Us that are currently non-conforming or on unpermitted structures. S B 897 now provides that these A D Us can be permitted unless it's deemed a safety or health concern. The changes in the attached ordinance reflect the minimum requirements of new state laws. The changes are underlined and in strike through to clearly show the modifications to the A D U ordinance. Staff recommends council adopt the amended A D U and J D U ordinance for the new state requirements. And myself and city attorney Andrew Shen are both available if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions of staff at this time?
Again, I do, but I'm trying to wait for other people. I'm sorry. It's, it's, Sammy, it's not a question. It's a, it's a compliment. You, you, you did a great job on this. Thank you very much. I would, I would have a request, however. On page 174 of the overall document, the third or fourth page of your reports, item H refers to fees, making no suggestions for changes. But can you get back to me and perhaps the, the planning chair as well? I'm curious what an additional A D U would cost someone, whether it be the sewer, sanitary five district improvements we just talked about, additional hookup fees with municipal water, additional taxes for additional units with the town. So this is obviously talking about impact fees and specific fees, I get that. But are there other costs? What other costs would, would, would a member of our community face by adding an A D U following these, these exempt provisions? Thank you.
You're looking for an answer, some subsequent date? Yeah, very well. Okay.
Get back to you when, when you, when you find it out. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. No, not at all. Any other questions for staff at this time? All right, not seeing any. We'll open it up for public comment. I don't see anyone here in chambers looking to address this agenda item. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone online?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking over at the attendees, eight attendees and no raised hands.
All right, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Council member Wilkinson.
I guess my only comment around this is more in relation to what we do in terms of providing incentives outside of just having to approve this that will actually create an increase in our housing stock in relation to A D Us. Because this just, I think in principle, sounds like nice things to do and we'll approval, likely approval of this. But I don't know that without financial incentives, it will do much to bring forward our stock of A D Us. That would be my only comment.
Thank you. And it may have as much to do with financial disincentives, which I think is what Vice Mayor Mark's comment was about, yeah.
Right. So if we, we have to create financial incentives, that means reversing the disincentives that currently exist.
Thank you. Council member Cooper?
I actually attended the planning commission meeting where this was discussed. So I was familiar with it and recognizing that this is the necessary changes that need to be made at this time, I support it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mark.
Thank you. Likewise, I can approve this first reading. They are required amendments to ordinances to be consistent with the state laws. And both the Planning Commission and Sammy did a great job in making it very clear and concise with our codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kimmizer.
Yes, I agree, and I want to thank staff and the planning commission for their hard work on this.
I just want to echo all of those comments. Sammy, terrific work here. Thank you very much. And to you and the entire team. There's a lot to do more in terms of getting these things built, but we're moving in the right direction. I'll entertain a motion to approve the second reading, final adoption of the ordinance.
I can make a motion to approve the introduction, a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Belvidere to amend zoning code, chapter nineteen point seven-nine.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Kimmizer.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkinson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mark.
Yes.
Mayor Lynch.
Yes.
The I's have it in the motion is adopted five oh.
Thank you. That brings us to agenda item six D. At the request of staff, this item has been continued to the March thirteen, twenty twenty-three meeting. So we'll move on past that and move to agenda item seven A, which is Presentation of Priorities of the City of Belvidere Parks Open Spaces and Lanes Committee. I understand we have a report from Tony Boyd, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. We are joined this evening by Jenna Watson, Chair of the Parks Open Space and Lanes Committee. And she will be presenting the other of the two reports that the committee is required to provide according to the new charter that was approved last year. This report is on the priorities of the Parks Open Space and Lanes Committee, as opposed to the other one, which is it's an update on the measures taken to address the priorities of the Parks Open Space and Lanes Committee. So with that, I will hand over to Jenna Watson.
Thank you, Tony. Hi, Jenna.
Hello, everyone. How are you? Can you hear me?
You sure can. Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. It's always, it's always a little bit, a little bit, little bit tricky. We had our first hybrid meeting of the Parks Open Spaces and Lanes Committee. And I have to say, the technology was not that smooth, so I'm hopeful this will go, this will go better. First of all, thank you. Thank you very much to the mayor and to the council for having me. This is our first of these types of reports given by the Parks Open Spaces and Lanes Committee as the new charter was put in place last March. So if there is content that you either would like to see or would you would not like to see in this report going forward, please let us know, since this is our first one, we can obviously change format. Very little of what I'm going to say this evening is going to be new, uncharted territory. I think you heard a lot of what our priorities were in the report that I made in November, which was actually submitted in August to the city council. And I think just by being residents of Belvidere and by walking around and enjoying our beautiful outdoors, that none of these priorities will come as a surprise to you in that way either. All of these priorities were discussed and approved at our January nineteenth meeting, the Parks Open Spaces and Lanes Committee. And so I'm going to list the priorities that we discussed at that meeting and then briefly go into each one of them. The first is lanes, development, maintenance, and repairs. Part of that is the Park Lane Project, also Centennial Park Project, and Artist's View Project. Second is vegetation and tree management, public views, and then private projects on public lands. I think most of us can agree that the lanes are one of the things that makes Belvidere very truly special. I know Mill Valley thinks they have lanes too, but ours, but ours are magnificent. However, they're aging. And so many of Belvidere's lanes have missing or broken hand railings, unstable and broken steps. And so our highest priority for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four is the installation of handrails and the repair of unstable steps for safety and accessibility. Not only are lanes fantastic if you want to get in shape or get from one place to another without going all the way around the island, but there are also an evacuation route for many, for many people. There's a number of our stairs, such as Centennial Park, Upper Cedar Lane, Lower Woodland Lane, Lower Cedar Lane, Upper McLean Lane, Pagoda Lane, and Corinthian Lane that are in pretty sorry shape. And then there's others that are in need of repair as well. As I said in November, we've been talking with the city, the city staff at great length of trying to figure out the most efficient and cost-effective way of maintaining our lanes, especially both the handrail and the stairs. One thing that I want to, I want to highlight is the Park Lane stair, the bottom part that's wooden, recently got completely replaced, which is magnificent. So if any of you have not experienced the new wooden stairs, the bottom of Park Lane, I highly recommend it. Obviously, for a little bit farther up on Park Lane, the city has been given a small triangle of land that's a budding, a budding Park Lane. And the POSLC has been working through with a landscape architect a plan for putting in new potentially concrete stairs, replacing these lovely new wooden stairs, and doing some design and planning work for a small seating area there. Centennial Park, if any of you have walked through there, additionally, the wooden stairs at the top of Centennial Park need some pretty dramatic help. We've also been, we've also been working with landscape architect and trying to figure out a configuration for, for replacing those stairs and then, and then doing some additional work in Centennial Park with respect to pruning, tree maintenance, and potentially, potentially some new plantings. One thing I want to highlight in Centennial Park is that a great deal of pruning has already been done. And so if you, if you walk down Centennial Park, you'll see that there's, there's some, there's some new vistas that were not there six months ago. Artist's View, another lane, this would be a new lane to be a walkway from Beach Road down to the, down to the beach below with vegetation and seating, continues to be a priority of the POSLC. Obviously, this is just in the sort of twinkle in our eye stage, stage right now. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars was specified in the five-year budget, basically as a placeholder currently for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. And as we, as we move, as we move forward, I will probably become much more vocal about this, about this project, because I think it's fantastic, and so does my Labrador. So one of the things about, about our lanes is that in addition to using the city budget and the potential for, especially for new lines, for raising, raising private donations, that there's opportunities to fund and complete lane infrastructure, repair and development, to the extent that private parties who abut the lanes are doing, are already doing construction. For example, we've had a number of houses that are, that are on Beach Road that have been, that have been doing construction along, along the shorelines. One of the great things about our new committee charter is that the POSLC has been brought into the conversation about preserving the public's right to be, to be in public spaces, including our shorelines, including our lanes, et cetera. And so I wanted to thank city staff for, for really using the Parks and Open Spaces and Lanes Committee as your, I don't want to say sounding more, but really including us in the conversation. The next priority is vegetation and tree management. We are blessed in Belvidere with a lot of vegetation. Not all of it is great vegetation. With, with the drought, which knocking on something is not quite, not quite over, there have been a number of dead and dying trees. And the removal of dead and dying trees on public and private land is a high priority of our committee. They're more than an eyesore. They're a danger to the, to the community, including as a fire hazard. Diseases can also spread from one tree to another, and dead trees cease to provide any sort of, any sort of environmental benefit. The summer of twenty twenty, Anne Marie Walker led our Trees, Vegetation, and Views survey, which found over thirty-seven dead and dying trees on public and private, and private land. Very few of those have actually been removed as of now, which is two and a half years later. And so our committee would really like an increase in the budget to be able to mitigate some of the dangers that are presented by dead and dying trees in Belvidere, especially on public land. Then there's, of course, there's just regular vegetation management, the maintenance of all the plantings in the city's public, public places. You know, you walk around Belvidere and things look really attractive. However, some invasive, invasive species have started to make inroads. And we want for the city staff to be able to have adequate resources to be able to continue to maintain and preserve our, the beauty of our public spaces in Belvidere. What goes along with that is our public views. When vegetation gets too large, especially once again invasive species, the views which really make Belvidere so special are impinged. We do have a six-foot hedge rule that's on, that's on the books in Belvidere. But, you know, we can all, we can all walk around or drive around and see a number of hedges that are considerably higher than, 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 than six, than six feet. Many of them have just, have just, have just grown up, and it's, and it's not a it's not, it's not a matter of animus by, by the homeowners. It's just a matter, just a matter of not, not chopping them down. The last of priorities I wanted to highlight is the effects of private projects on public land. I touched on this earlier. But I want to say the procedure is working, is working very well with the Chair of the POSLC, me right now, being informed of the proposed construction of private residences affecting most, most often the public lanes or access to, access to public lanes or amenities that are at our public parks, and giving us, giving us an opportunity to weigh in on these changes and on the effect that they will have on our public spaces, lanes, and public, and public amenities. And we are very happy to continue to advise the city in the planning department as to private construction projects and any other maintenance matters that are affecting public spaces. I also wanted to say, as much as I miss, miss Roberts, I've really enjoyed getting to know Tony and to working, working with Tony since his arrival in Belvidere. So thank you very much. Do any council members have any questions about our priorities, requests, anything of that nature?
Yeah, thank you, Jenna. I was gonna, thank you for that comprehensive and excellent report. And see if my fellow council members have any comments or questions or direction. Yes, Councilmember Wilkinson.
Jenna, thank you so much for the report. It's very thorough. Did I hear you correctly that of the thirty-seven dead and dying trees that are identified in the summer of twenty twenty, none of them have been removed?
No, no, some, some have been removed. And I have to say, one of my friends who lives on Beach Road gave me credit for getting the really giant pine tree that was right by the SFYC removed, because I had arrived on the, on the committee about a week earlier. She was like, wow, that's really quick. No, I'm sure, I'm sure Robert and Tony would be able to speak to the number of dead and dying trees that, that have, that have been removed. But there's a large number of the thirty-seven, including one that's in my yard, that, that still, that still remain.
I'd be curious to know from staff on public land, at least, what number have been removed and what remain?
I can find that out for you and, yeah, let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
That would be a high priority. I know you say that is, but it'd be a very high priority. And then another is more a question in the, and I think I know the answer, but in your report, you'd indicated that we had budgeted for spending on Artist's View in fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. My understanding is that we have a zero line item right now for those, and I wanted staff to clarify that to make sure that we are on the same page.
Thank you. Yes. Yep. I was going to chime in at some point, but the language isn't clear in that, in that paragraph. The funding that's referred to in there, twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand, is for the design and engineering, lanes, design and engineering, not Artist's View project.
Right. The, the either twenty or twenty-five thousand is generally for lanes, engineering, and design. So it would have, it would be used for any, for any lanes.
So Jenna, you did ask for some sort of feedback, because this is the first time you presented. I would say in future years, just a table at the end showing sort of all these budget numbers lined up, line items would be really helpful, because it's kind of hard to, to go through just a written write-up. I do have some comments, but I'd love to hear from other council members first.
Thank you. Do we have other questions at this point for Jenna?
Just one quick, Jenna. You mentioned private funding. In my experience, private funding has been sort of lane-based, project-based.
Yes.
Have, or have you thought about a more comprehensive sort of, sort of annuity type, type, type funding approach where you can raise money to maintain and support the initiatives above and beyond the city's budgets?
You know, I would absolutely love to do that. And I know that it was one of the things that was, that was kicked around when we were discussing the playground, because obviously the playground needs, needs a significant amount of, amount of maintenance. I would, I would absolutely love to have some, some kind of annuity trust fund, some, something for, especially, especially for the lanes. Because, you know, there's, there's always a missing step. There's always a missing railing, you know. And having to, to come back to the council every, every year and say, please, I'd really like to replace the railing at the top of Woodward. It would be very, it would be very nice if we didn't have to do that. How logistically might one go about putting it, putting in place such a fund?
Oh, I think you need to speak to your ex-chairman.
I mean, I mean, as a, I mean, as a, as a, as a city separate fund or as a friends of the lanes of Belvidere?
I don't know. I, I can, I can talk to you after this or separately.
Okay, great.
Wonderful. Thanks, Jenna.
Any other questions for Jenna at this time?
One comment first, says Nancy Kimmizer. Jenna, thank you so much. I think this, and your committee, thank you for this report. It's, it's, it's really helpful. And I think I share Councilmember Wilkinson's comment that it might be helpful to add either sort of a consolidation, a table, or a ranking, perhaps, of priorities just to give staff direction on how to move from this excellent policy paper to actual implementation of some of these items. And I was really glad to see the bottom of Park Lane there. I think that's low-hanging fruit. I think that's a really doable project and one that as I think of the work I've done with age-friendly Belvidere, that particular potential Serenity Bench or Serenity, just a spot to look at the incredible view from there, is really accessible to a large part of Belvidere that might not be able to run up Golden Gate Steps seventeen times. But those new wooden steps are very, very nice. I know they're not a hundred-year steps, but they're great for now and the next thirty years. And I would just encourage you, as a parallel effort, when you, when you get the design with this curved concrete staircase, and you begin to price that out, you might just consider getting a second design that would utilize the brand-new wooden steps and merely just allow an access point and to really compare the costs of those. And I don't know what the answer would be, but I think that there may be a real gap there and it might, in the end, ensure that the project actually get built.
That's done, right.
I just suggest that that be done as an alternative. I don't know what your committee would decide in the end, but that's a really great project that a great many Belvedere residents could appreciate.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilperson Kaminter. I'm actually very excited about the project as well. It's interesting, you know, you were saying about a different design. One of the things that's recently come up is there's a utilities trench which is basically alongside where the concrete slab is on the top of the stairs. And so there's going to have to be a slight reconfiguration or a tweaking of the plan anyway. And so I agree, had the old steps merely been patched again, potentially with more blocks put under them, you know, I would be much more in favor of getting rid of the whole steps. But I agree, they were rebuilt very nicely and they have much longer treads and they're much more comfortable to walk on. So, Robert, let's put that on our list to discuss.
Jenna, I just have a couple of quick questions. First, thank you for this comprehensive report. There's a lot of thinking that went into it and I want to commend you and the entire committee for producing it. And I think we're seeing the value of the homework assignment that was baked into the committee charter last year. I hope that didn't feel like make-work because I find this is an incredibly helpful document. And so I hope you appreciate how well it's received. One question I had for you about lane funding, and this is on page... Let's see, three, I guess, of your report. It refers to when private parties are obtaining approval from the Planning Department for construction on or adjacent to public lanes, that that might be a circumstance where we could have opportunities to fund lane infrastructure repair and development.
Right. This really came up when a homeowner was doing considerable amount of construction and they were basically using part of the lane as a staircase to their own home. And so they were going to be rebuilding part of the lane because they use the steps for their own home. And so we encouraged them to, you know, to basically not only rebuild the portion that was just going to their front door, but a little bit farther down as well. And so I'm not talking about trying to impose some punitive tax or anything else. I mean, Lord knows, construction in Belvedere is expensive enough as it is. But really where it makes sense. And, you know, if someone wants to rebuild their fence that's next to a lane, we're not going to ask them to repave the lane. But if they're going to be doing, you know, repaving on their sidewalk that abuts the lane and the top of the lane looks terrible and is completely, you know, in need of repaving, kind of makes sense. So, you know, I'm trying to think of creative ways of getting lane maintenance to be performed, especially where the materials for the repairs are already going to be in place.
Thank you. That's very helpful. My second question had to do with a discussion around the many hedges in town that vastly exceed the six-foot rule. And the question really is, I mean, I share the concerns that you expressed tonight and that are reflected in the report, but the question I really had for you is, has the committee studied options about how either the committee or the city would go about identifying the hedges that are subject to the six-foot rule and are not in compliance and how we could initiate enforcement efforts?
Well, Anne Marie Walker and her lovely TVD crew did exactly that in the summer of 2020. When I think back to 2020, all of us were just walking around anyway. So, you know, and she took our proclivities to just dogwalk all day and actually, you know, made it very productive. And so we have a list of the view-blocking hedges. But the question is, what do we do about it? I know that while good fences may make good neighbors, tall hedges make for bad neighbors. And so trying to become the hedge police, it would make me, I think, the least popular person in town. So what exactly do we do about it? We don't have any sort of code enforcement mechanism. And it's, you know, I don't really have a good answer for you unless the homeowner is asking for something else. We ask them to come into compliance with their hedge. I was kind of hoping that the council might have some ideas.
Thank you.
I actually have a thought and idea relation to that. I think the city would have a very difficult time addressing any, what we might consider non-compliant hedge height, if there's not a previously established entitlement related to those hedges.
I agree, I agree.
So that would be the first pass. Whoever would look at this is to... If a project was approved with entitlement related to those hedges and there was a grown height requirement, I'm not speaking correctly, I apologize, to, in their plans, that can and potentially could be enforced. If someone lives in a property with no entitled improvements, there's no way the city can or would do that. So that would be the pass that I would suggest. And then put it in the hands of planning when they have time, which might be difficult to judiciously and prioritize those areas with your input, your committee's input, which might apply with some zoning enforcement there.
Right, right. And I completely agree that there's also a number of hedges that are well over six feet tall, but they're not blocking anyone's view. They're not causing anyone any distress. And that just goes to the general green nature of our lovely little island.
Thank you. Let's open it up for public comment at this time. I see no one in chambers looking to address this agenda item. Madam Clark, do we have anyone with a raised hand?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, for the record, I do want to make the announcement that public comment for this item was received in the clerk inbox at approximately 5:30, which did meet the one-hour deadline. Twenty-eight pages were printed for council and are available for public review on our website. Looking over at the attendee site, I do not see any raised hands. So the only comment that was received was the email with an attachment of approximately five letters.
Thank you. And each of us do have copies of that public comment. So thank you for that. And so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for any further discussion or directions. But if there aren't, Councilmember Wilkinson.
I mean, I guess my main observation here is that the budget request that you're asking for is on the lanes is more than double what has tentatively been penciled in for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And with the exception of Artist's View, which we can discuss separately, they all seem very important initiatives. But they'll have to be considered within the general constraints that we find ourselves in when we get to the numbers that we need to figure out what is affordable for the budget. So that's the only thing I would say because everybody would love to get twice, you know, what we're budgeting for. And so I would just sort of caveat the requests in that context. And then the only comment I'd make in relation to Artist's View is it seems that the Parks and Open Space and Lane Committee is very supportive of it, but it's clear that that's not felt necessarily throughout the whole community. It's a contentious issue. And so I just would say that we just need to tread lightly there and do a lot more homework and outreach into the community to get a real sense of whether that's something that would be supported by the broader community.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. With respect to the budgetary requests, you know, my grandmother told me, if you don't ask, you don't get. So I figured I'd throw it out there.
She was right. Any other direction or comments for Jenna?
I would. Great. Thank you. And I'll just agree completely with Councilmember Wilkinson. And as you or the committee develops and reviews, as you said, a twinkle in the eye, plans for Artist's View, I would go through not only, as Councilmember Wilkinson described, the public comment and the broader community perspective, but also, you know, the letter of the law, not law, but of the deeded restrictions on the property. You know, make sure you go through that as carefully as you possibly can and that you form an opinion as to what the prescribed uses are for the property. So you can be clear and the council can be clear about that.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or direction for Jenna? I would just add, I wanted to echo, Jenna, thank you again for the work, to you and the committee. I wanted to echo the comment about, sort of to the extent possible, force ranking the priorities. So for example, the project that you talked about, the triangle at the bottom of Park Lane, being something of great interest and we're sort of moving down the road towards that, but at the same time, safety and accessibility for all the lanes are really important. And that's mentioned properly, I think, as number one in the report, where we have broken handrails. And certainly those wooden stairs at the bottom of Park Lane before they were replaced were really quite a hazard. And so, given the limited funds available, I think ranking those priorities and identifying, as Councilmember Wilkinson said, what the line items are that are available for that, I think is really, really would be very helpful. But otherwise, I just wanted to thank you again for all the hard work and for this wonderful report.
Thank you. And I do want to reiterate that the lane maintenance and repairs are the highest priority for us.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Good night. That brings that item to a close. And our next agenda item is the approval of the Citizen of the Year nomination.
Thank you, Mayor Lynch. The Citizen of the Year Committee, comprised of nineteen former Citizen of the Year individuals, met on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth at 5:00 PM. Three of those members were not able to attend. However, Jim Lynch, per past practice, the sitting mayor, was able to attend. The committee during that meeting reviewed several nomination forms and voted unanimously to recognize the following citizens. The Citizen of the Year for 2022, Robert Bob McCaskill. And the Citizen Emeritus in 2022, Melville Mel Owen. The decision before the city council tonight is to recommend the approval of that decision and schedule an event.
Thank you, Robert. Do we have any questions for Robert at this time? I just have a quick one. It's scheduling the event. Would we do that in connection with the annual meeting? It's sort of targeted now for late April?
That's correct. We're looking at mid to late April.
All right. Thank you. We should open this up for public comment. Is there anyone here who wish to address the agenda item? Not seeing any. Madam Clark, is there anyone online?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking over at the attendees, with eight attendees, I do see one raised hand. We'll go over and unmute Mr. Rothman.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Rothman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry, when you said "public comment," I thought you meant that you had moved on to the open time for public comment. So forgive me, I do want to speak during that latter time, but not now.
Very well. We'll come back to you. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I actually do have a question.
Let me close the public comment and we'll bring it back to council. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. And it's just from my recollection, where it says, in terms of the no changes to the recommended guidelines, the city will continue to solicit nominations in a citywide mailing to residents. How did we do that this year? I don't remember. Did we actually send a letter to every home or did we just do it in the newsletter?
So it was published in the newsletter and then we also sent individual nomination forms, blank forms, to every resident in Belvedere.
Okay. I'm just... In future years, I wonder whether there are further means to reach the community because it strikes me that we don't necessarily get a lot of feedback, recommendations. I don't know how to do that, but whether that's something to consider.
I'm sure there's ways we can prove that, potentially reach out to the newspaper as well and publication. And generally, that would come after we have the nomination, but that's something we can look into.
And in terms of comments, I am thrilled that Bob McCaskill has been recommended as the Citizen of the Year. I think he's just done incredible things for Belvedere over many, many years. So I'm thrilled to see him there as the Citizen of the Year 2022.
Thank you. Any other comments among council?
I think these are two excellent nominations, both well-deserved. And I'm prepared to make a motion.
Excellent.
So I move that we confirm the nominations of Bob McCaskill, Robert Bob McCaskill, Citizen of the Year 2022 and Citizen Emeritus 2022, Mel Owen.
I can second that.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaminter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mark?
Yes.
Mayor Lynch?
Yes.
Have it, and the motion is adopted by both.
Before we move on from that matter, I just want to say how much fun it was to attend that meeting. I didn't realize it was part of the honorary duties of the mayor, but to sit in this room here and to observe and not participate, but observe all of these former Citizens of the Year, which was all of them, save three, was really quite amazing and fun to hear all these incredibly truthful, but also very flattering things about our neighbors and friends, Bob and Mel. It was really a terrific thing and it's just a wonderful tradition to see up close. So I thought that was very fun. All right. Well, that concludes that agenda item. Let's move now to the open forum. Is there anyone present who would wish to speak at the open forum? I see two raised hands. Please come forward and tell us your name and address, please.
Hi, I want to introduce myself. I'm Tracy Paul. I live at 108 Golden Gate. Our family in the last month has been thrust into the coyote issue here in Belvedere. So I just wanted to come here to today's meeting and introduce myself, talk to you a little bit about what we're thinking so that we're prepared for Thursday. Winnie, our pug, was attacked in our yard at 2:15 in the afternoon, mere feet from where our kids play and where I was standing with her. She's alive, but it was an absolutely terrifying event. One actually so important to my family that my kids are still awake watching this meeting right now because they care so much. I was asked whether the community wants something be done about the coyotes. At the time when this occurred, I didn't think I was alone. I didn't think my family was alone. I had spoken to many residents, but I really wanted to gather that support. So three days after the attack, we started a petition here in Belvedere to just see how our residents felt about the issue. As of this evening, the petition has received three hundred and fifty-nine signatures. I think I wanted a hundred, just to show you guys that people did want something. And the petition simply asks for the city... for the city council and the city officials to take action on the aggressive coyotes that have since taken over our yards, our streets where we're trying to walk and frankly, where our kids are playing. So as we prepare for Thursday's meeting, here are the three things I want to leave you with. First, it's no longer a myth on whether or not the, the city and the residents care about this issue. I think the number of residents that have signed the petition that have stopped me on the streets, that have shared the stories and the logs with the police is an indication of where our city stands on this issue. The second is that it's escalating. A dog was killed last week on West Shore out of their yard. I can't imagine what my story would be if I wasn't standing in the yard with our dog. And lastly, today we're talking about cats and dogs and that's where I want it to end. I do not want this to escalate to the kids. And frankly, to the stories that I received from our fellow residents who don't walk at the same pace that I walk with and with the same amount of athletic, you know, perseverance that I could take on a coyote. I think it's incredibly important that we take this issue before it becomes a major, major issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Hello. Hey, guys. Great to see you all in person, finally. Brian Davis, 37 West Shore. Thanks for the time. I got involved in the coyote issue with Tracy and Ben, just because I had raised the issue last fall. And still to this day, I get one, two, three emails a week of asking what can be done, what is being done. And so I've collected quite a list of people who are concerned about it and was able to contribute to the petition that was put together. The thing I wanted to, to impress upon you all, as Tracy mentioned, the problem's getting worse. I mean, people were optimistic when the signs went up and the, and the hazing kits went out in October. But the pups that were born last spring are now full fledged coyotes. On West Shore, we have a particular refuge for them in the, in the, in the area behind us. At least once a week, I have someone knocking on my door looking for help because they're being stalked down the street. They're on the, they're on the porches, they're on the patios. As, as Tracy just mentioned, we had a dog that was killed last week. An 85 year old lady lives on the street. It was her, you know, her person, right, that was killed and it was identified by the red sweater it was wearing as it lay in the gutter dead. Kenzie, a beloved pet of Golda, was killed a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago, I should say. And so it's a, it's a real issue and it's getting worse. You know, the, the hill behind us used to be full of deer and raccoon. They're all gone, right? Which is great for our bushes and great for our trash cans. But it's really bad for the cats and dogs because that's, that's who's coming next. And so I just want to appeal to you guys. Don't Thursday, I, I'm looking forward to having the informational session, but I would love for you guys to come with a plan. I know what Tracy and I have talked about is some sort of citizen led committee that can, you know, tackle this issue with a, a level of urgency that I think the community would like. I know I would volunteer to be part of that. I know she would as well. And I think, I think showing a sense of urgency here is important just as a community. And Councilmember Kim, and sir, I want to appeal to you specifically. All the people over the age of 60 on my street no longer walk at dusk, no, no longer walk at dawn, right? We're trying to create an age friendly community. This isn't, this is, this is inhibiting that. And so, and we talked about the hedges. We want them to be, you know, less than six feet. I live in a view easement. I can't, I don't have, you know, my, I have a four foot hedge, right? I can't build a big fence to keep coyotes out. And a lot of people are in that situation. So I understand it's a complex issue. I understand there, you know, when I raised this in the election, I got people emailing me that, you know, cats are bad and they kill all the birds, right? I know there are two sides to, to all these, all these equations. But there are a lot of people that are scared and they want to see something done and want to see progress. And I just would encourage you guys on Thursday to do more than give information. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else present who would wish to address the open forum? All right. Madam Clark, do we still have someone online wishes to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do see one raised hand. I'm going to go over and unmute Mr. Rothman.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. First, a minor but important point. Mr. Mayor, you did not allow for public comment on the item that involved the first reading of the ordinance. I had my hand up. I, I don't, I don't need to speak on it now, but you should be aware that if I did wish to speak on it and it was not called for public comment by members of the public, you would have to go over the whole item all over again. Because the lack of public, the opportunity for public input, please.
Sir Rothman, let me just say that we did call for public comment on that. I just didn't want you to be under the mistaken impression that we did not.
No, not the, the item, the item that councilperson Wilkinson, if you go back over the tape, you'll find the, I had my hand up, you won't find that. But the councilperson Wilkinson made a comment about incentives for ADUs. There was not, please, please look at the tape. Believe me, it wasn't there. Because I had my hand up, I was ready to speak, but I don't want to speak on that. I just want to explain to you the implications if it isn't done. The next thing is, with respect to the, the Zoom, it's absolutely wonderful. I thought it was just going to be a wonderful benefit for members of the public, but if you go back over what took place at the meeting, attorneys and representatives of people spoke on the Zoom instead of having to travel all the way to the meeting. And they, I'm sure they charged their clients less because they only had to, they didn't have to travel. So it's just an absolutely wonderful thing. And also with respect to the Zoom, I want to tell you that the light is much better in the room over Zoom than it, than it is actually in the room. And that's wonderful. The final thing is, I am concerned about the fact that you have deferred the hiring of the police officer. In other words, you, you authorize that there should be a certain number of police officers and then you deferred hiring a police officer. It frankly, that's takes away from the very meaning of authorizing something. It is true, the money went to the, to the pension fund, but pensions funds do not drive patrol cars. And we had increasing crime. I think the people, criminals know that in Belvedere, there are not going to be any random night patrols. And it seems that the stats that I've read about, the break-ins and God forbid, there should ever be a break-in when there's someone at home and someone gets killed. That they, that the criminals know there will not be nighttime random patrols. I would urge you to end the deferment of the position that you authorized and to hire another police officer so we can have adequate patrols. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Bill. Madam Clark, is there anyone else who wishes to address the open forum?
Thank you, Mayor. I, looking over at the attendees, it's seven attendees. There is no other raised hands.
Right. That concludes the open forum and that concludes our agenda. So thank you everyone. We're adjourned.